Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, folks. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 13th, meeting of the New London Planning Board. Just a reminder, we're being recorded for your future viewing enjoyment. I have a light agenda tonight, which is a nice thing, so hopefully it won't be too long of a meeting for us. First up, we're gonna talk about a lot line adjustment on King Hill Road. Clayton, you wanna come up?
Press that?
Perfect. Thank you.
So, yes, this is very similar to what we discussed, I think, a couple months ago. Since that time, we've had, I think, all the information collected, the wetlands were delineated by a wetland scientist, the test pit was dug, the house sites kind of identified. There were more wetlands than I guessed at. And so, basically, we end up with a 4.32 acre lot that used to be the lot in front, and now it's kind of the lot on the side. If you look up at the top of the little charts there. And a 10.6 acre lot, so we're to the east side, that has most of the wetlands. Both the lots meet the requirement for the density with 15% of the wetlands. We have state subdivision approval for the lot under four acres, a lot under four acres, under five acres. I think we meet all the setbacks from, not from to build. And I think when, I mean, kind of when this is all done, Alex Gioldasis, John Gioldasis' son will own the 4.3 acre lot and plans to build as soon as he can, and Frank and his brother, John Soliotis, will own the larger parcel. So, it's currently owned by all three family members. I don't know if we have any questions, or...
Go ahead, Janet.
Clayton, what, on the access to King Hill, it does, it looks like there's a buffer in between the land and the actual road.
That is a limited access right of way that was put in when they did the entrance onto 89.
Okay.
There was an existing driveway into that land, I think it was a little closer to the bridge.
Okay.
They do have a driveway permit for that driveway as part of that whole project. It was kind of moved over. I think the state actually moved it over.
Okay.
So, there's a driveway permit granted in, I think it was the 80s, kind of confirming it.
So, this is a state piece of property that has
Right.
allowed access onto their property.
Right. They do not own, really, all the way to the King Hill Road, that property, right?
Okay. Because I wasn't sure by looking at the map, whether or not, okay?
Yeah. And that stops right, you see that little A right there?
Yeah.
But that's the end of the taking from the highway. So, the 4.32 acre lot has frontage on King Hill Road.
Okay.
Exclusive of the state.
Thank you.
And there's actually an existing driveway there, because there was a house there back in the 60s anyway, when they did the thing, and they tore it down.
Before my time. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Paul?
We may have talked about this, but what's the access to what will now be the back lot?
There really is no back lot, because we're only doing two lots. So, the 10 acre lot has access off that existing road, and the 4.3 acre lot has access to the building site right where that kind of little hatched area is. That's where he plans on building.
I'm sorry, I was reading the maps backwards.
He doesn't, I mean, to be honest, he doesn't have great access to the land in his two acres and back there, but he doesn't, that's not where he plans on building, or...
So, it's the blue lot that will have access over that right of way?
The blue line's the old line.
No, the blue lot. Mine has blue in red.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the, yeah, the blue lot will actually have that driveway access up the existing road.
Thank you.
And I think that we talked a little more about that little triangle lot the town owns, and that's still pending. That's, and that doesn't really have any bearing on the lot density or anything here.
And the abutter, isn't it Mike Murphy? The name's different on this map. Is it, who is the abutter going up toward, going up King Hill Road?
I'm not sure that Patrick isn't Mike's real first name.
I think it might be. I think that came off the, I think that came off the abutters list, I would think, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Patrick Michael Murphy.
Oh.
Yeah.
Peter, I know that you said that they have an access easement or whatever, but are all the curb cuts and everything approved? Is, lots changed since 1980, I just...
Yeah. They do have a driveway permit for the 10 acre lot, which is on file with DOT. I did send in another driveway permit for the existing driveway that was there. He looked at it and said it was all right, but I don't have the paperwork back from Division Two. I tried to get in touch with him the end of last week, and he, I think like everybody else, they're kind of short-staffed, and things are taking a lot longer than they used to.
Are there, no, you say something? Sorry. I am just second guessing. I'm not sure. Murphy, Michael, Patrick, so the tax card, sometimes the tax cards scramble the names. We might want to check on that before we record it. I mean, I don't think it has bearing on approving it or not. It might just mean if the Mylar, doesn't look like we have Mike's deed attached. I'm not sure on this other lot, maybe we do.
And he has been notified?
Yep. Yep. And I've talked to him a couple times about it. Looks like yours.
Yeah, I don't have to either. We could update that if we needed to.
Yeah. I'll check on it tomorrow. He's a town employee, it's easy to ask.
Yeah.
Are there other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay. Hearing, no questions? You want to do finding of facts?
Sure. So, really, there's only two relevant facts here, one being that both lots meet the minimum density for the agricultural rural residential zone, including the limited percentage of the well and area on the larger lot. And then, number two, is that they both have a conforming amount of road frontage for access.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
We'll say Paul seconded, maybe? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Thank you.
I did just text our HR office, because I think she can probably answer me between now what his paycheck goes to. So, if I get back from her before we leave, I'll sign that. And then, have you dropped off the checks to the office, or are they with the? Okay. All right. Okay. Doesn't sound like they think Patrick is his real first name. So, we might need a new Mylar. So, we, maybe we won't sign this one, and I'll confirm with you tomorrow, and then, if you guys are able to stop in in the next couple of days, once we have, if we need an updated, we can get it signed pretty quickly. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clayton.
Glad I brought it up.
Cool. Thank you. So, in just a minute, we'll do new business.
So, new business, we, the agenda was out before yesterday afternoon's water precinct meeting. I know some of you were there, but I don't know if everybody is up to date on the situation with the, the two projects that are sort of in limbo at the moment. Twin Pines had their water application into the water precinct, which was necessitated by the discovery of contamination in the water source on the Continuum property, and the water precinct denied Twin Pines' application for connection. So, we're not, frankly, I don't really know what this means for the project right now. You know, it certainly is a big hurdle for them to get over. I don't think that they have totally written off the project at this point. I think they're trying to find out if there are other viable solutions, but we don't have any of those answers at this point. So, I don't have, you know, much of an update on the, the future of those projects, other than, you know, it looks like that they will have to come up with something creative in order to, to make it work. So, I would say...
Can you use the mic, Paul? Just for the recording? Thanks.
Precisely. What is the applicant, what is the rationale for them to make that decision?
For the water precinct, for the commissioners? You know, I think probably the best thing to recommend is that if folks want to watch the recording, it was recorded yesterday, and I can send out a link to everybody. You know, the, the sort of Cliff Notes without being able to get into all the technical aspects of it, is the concern for capacity long-term, and whether or not they can, can sustain the, the need of the two projects.
That is, the hospital and the, and the project behind the soft shopping center?
Correct. And the Continuum project had not, has not submitted updated applications, so technically, they haven't been denied at this point, although, given the fact that they need at least twice, if not three times, the water capacity, I think we can make that conclusion that that would be denied. So...
On that subject, do you have any information, or anybody have any information, as to what the hospital is doing with that property, since it sits there and sits there? And I keep driving up that road, but today, I drove up the road, and there was, that road that goes into that empty acreage was plowed down or cut down, and they seem to be doing something, but I don't know.
Well, that was the road that they were using to access the test wells, so it was put in to get the, the well drilling truck out there. I think this is all so fresh that they really have no idea what this means for that property long-term at this point.
Did you, did you have a phone?
Sure. No.
I'm wondering, did I, was I correct in hearing contamination?
Correct. So, there's still, I would say, some mystery in exactly how the contamination moved. I've heard a couple of different things from a couple of different, pretty reliable people, so I'm not sure, you know, exactly which one is the case. But, as it appears, the New London Cleaners has had monitoring wells since 2016, onsite monitoring for a couple of chemicals. One is tetrachlorothylene. Did I get that right?
Tetrachloroethylene.
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 Yep. And when Continuum was able to sustain the volume through the 72-hour pump test, the water is then sent for testing, water quality testing, sort of the last step in all of it. And it came back with very high levels of this chemical that's tied to dry cleaning, that has apparently spread through the aquifer from the dry cleaner site. So, Twin Pines' 72-hour pump test application was then denied for fear of their pump test drawing that contamination from one side of the road to the other side of the road. To my knowledge, the contamination has not been found under the Crusini property at this point. That has not been said. I wouldn't, I guess, say for certain, but that has not been brought up. But, the, the reason for the denial was to hopefully avoid the continued spread. So, as far as what that means, and remediation, and all of those things, this is all pretty fresh within the last 17 days. So, I think those plans are, you know, will be forthcoming, but unfortunately, we're not in the know yet.
So, because we're talking about two different sections of DES, water and pollution, the selectmen have invited the pollution side of DES to come to a meeting, and they're going to come next Tuesday at 2:15. And we've generated, at this point, around 10 questions that we would like them to answer regarding the pollution that has been, that is at the cleaner site, which has spread in the aquifer. So, we will find out more from them. Yeah.
I guess a question. I was here yesterday and listened, and it, to me, it was not clear, but it seemed that they, that the commissioner, the precinct commissioners were saying that they had enough water to allow some individual hookups for some undefined time into the future. But, they weren't gonna allow this one. So, and, and, you know, there's the question of, I guess, we're calling it DES, I guess it's some subset that deals with water systems. Apparently, has not said that they can't hook them up, nor that they don't have the capacity to hook them up.
Did you say it was not said?
Well, there was a letter, I think 2019 or something, that was not clear. But now, apparently, has been clarified to say that they did not say that they couldn't.
So, in other words, they could?
I, I don't...
Potentially.
I just, I just wanted to ask the question if people heard it that way, that they've basically said that they're gonna prefer individual homes to larger projects.
What I heard them say yesterday was that they advised against it. They didn't tell them that they couldn't go ahead with the project. They advised against it, is, is what I heard them say yesterday.
It's unclear. I don't know.
Comments to make? What I heard, think, Paul, was that they talked about they're averaging one and a half hookups a year in the past, and now you're talking about a 60-unit hookup, which is like major increase in terms of the annual hookups, basically. I think the other issue came out to be with the fact that the, the cost of expanding the water supply system is gonna be very large down the road, especially depending on what goes on with Colby Point and the capacity of the wells to continue to pump out at Colby Point. And that, from their perspective, this is gonna be a cost that's only gonna be borne by the 1,100 people or households that are part of the water precinct, and it could be basically a backbreaker for some people. They're talking like $11 million for a new well, basically, plus a pumping situation, plus the pipelines to get to a reservoir, and maybe having to build another reservoir tank someplace.
And I think that was in relation to a new well at a totally different location.
Yeah.
Right. So, I mean, I think there's some, I don't want to say disagreement, but I think there's some different thoughts between what DES has put into letters, and I think what the precincts engineers, it seems like they're not necessarily in agreement on what future the, the wells at Colby Point might hold, or new backup wells might hold, which I guess I was, I was surprised that sort of two experts would have such vastly different opinions. I don't know what to make of it, but, you know, it was interesting.
Other questions or comments on that from the board? Okay. Thanks for that update. I don't think we need, I don't, do you guys have questions or comments on that? I imagine not. Oh, Dan, Rich? Okay.
Rich, I've seen, I guess, I heard that the precinct indicate the two experts had agreed in their recommendation that there were, I heard them say, there wasn't any disagreement amongst the two experts that they get information from.
I understood it to be that Pete Pittsus, their engineer from Underwood, was the expert that was advising them. I mean, I saw the letter from DES sort of putting, you know, not necessarily individuals in the camps, but Underwood and DES seemed to have a different thought. I'm not saying I know which, which way is right, just sharing for the folks that weren't there.
And I'm just sharing what I thought I heard.
Thanks, Rich. Yeah. Probably worth watching the tape for everybody, watching it again. I had to leave early, so... Okay, public comment? Anything that is not on the agenda?
Yeah, I've got one thing.
Yeah. Thanks. Go ahead, Janet.
The selectmen would like the planning board's ideas about where we could put stations for electric cars. Where do they think we could put them? Should the town supply some EV stations, that sort of thing? So, and do we need zoning changes if we do indeed have electricity available to people with electric cars? Okay? Something to think about?
Yep. Can I suggest, too, that the Energy Committee be involved in that?
Yeah.
Can say, that's come up a lot, you know, in terms of, like, the library lot versus the shopping center versus town office, like, those are kind of the, and then the park and ride, which I know is state, but generally, the way these things are favored is that you want it near stuff that people can do while they're charging, unless it's a fast charger, in which case, that's so fast that it's like, you know, 10 minutes you're in and out. But, but, so that's kind of the, the main discussion, and when this, when the town has applied for grants before, something like the shopping center has won out a little bit, because there's so much there that you can go and do, versus even like town office, or, I mean, town office, you could park there, then go to, you know, grounds, or go to whatever. But, so that's kind of the discussion that's come up a lot, I suppose.
Well, one of the concerns for us was, are we gonna take a parking away from businesses? So, you know, you don't even want to take two or three spaces in the town parking lot across from the library.
Right.
If people are gonna be there all day, you know, charging their cars.
Yep.
So, you know, those are, those are the types of issues, or problems, that we'd like to see.
Yep. And a lot of it comes down to the charging speed as well, so the, what they were saying, the DC fast charge, those are the, the high-speed, those are much more expensive to install than, say, like, the one at Colby Sawyer.
Right.
I believe they're putting in another one over there, but those are more for, like, I work at this employer, I'm gonna pull up at 9:00 AM, charge all day, and then go home. The DC fast chargers are, you know, I can imagine 30 minutes at most, but, I mean, I would think more like 15, 20 minutes. So, those are more considered high turnover, more expensive to install, but much more effective than the other kind. So, it's almost like two different use cases, and the state has now started to, and just generally, the, the industry has started to not, has moved away from the slower chargers, because they just don't think they're very effective, because the turnover is so slow versus, you know, the fast charger. So, it does change, I hear your point completely about not wanting to tie up spaces, but it does change the calculus a little bit if you had cars parking for shorter periods.
Right.
And they'll, and they'll, you know, they could, there are mechanisms where they can ding cars that stay too long, and they can say, you know, you're gonna have to pay a fee or something like that if you keep your car there too long and tie up a space, so. But definitely a discussion worth having, for sure.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Which takes us back to the issue of, of the project behind the shopping center, as well as the project for the hospital. What recourse, I don't understand the system, I guess, what recourse does, do those applicants have at this point?
I'm not sure. I'm really not sure. I don't know if there's an appeal process, or, unfortunately, it's a different...
So, all the money that a nonprofit has invested in trying to develop this process is now up the tubes, or down the tubes, whichever you prefer?
Yeah. And I just don't know, I mean, if it were a municipal, a town-owned utility, I believe their appeal would go to the zoning board of adjustment, but obviously, the water precinct doesn't have a zoning board of adjustment, so I don't know what the, the appeal process was if a developer wished to do that. I would imagine it's spelled out in the, the water precinct's policies, but I'm not familiar with that. It may be in the RSA that allows for precincts to be a political subdivision. It also, you know, I've wrestled with the thought of, development moratoriums are a very specific thing allowed by RSA for towns to implement a short-term ordinance that buys a, a specific period of time to solve a problem that is standing in the way of potential development. And it's ultimately, you know, you guys, who the RSA gives power to and work with the selectmen, and you have to pass the ordinance temporarily, and it's a pretty technical process, but I don't know when those entities don't exist. I don't think, I mean, the commissioner said yesterday, this is not a moratorium. If they were to say that they wanted to issue a moratorium, I don't know how that process works when you don't have those boards just as a natural part of your entity. I, I imagine that they can't be the first utility precinct to, to have to deal with that, that there's gotta be something in state law. It's just outside of what, you know, we typically deal with, so I'm not sure.
And that's, that's true of the hospitals' project as well.
Yeah. The, the hospital project has not actually had a decision rendered at this point that I'm aware of, so I don't know if they would have something to appeal, per se. I think they would have to submit an application and have the application appealed, but I don't know if that's something that either one is considering or not.
Okay.
I mean, I, I didn't hear thoughts yesterday that made me believe that they would change an opinion on an appeal. It sounded pretty made up.
Thanks, Paul, and thanks, Adam. Paul, you got a question, too?
I was intrigued by that one, because of the special nature of the workforce housing. You know, how does, I haven't had time to research whether, how that workforce housing RSA applies to non-municipal taxing authorities. But, and, I'm sorry, and I got totally off the track. The other subject that we were talking about before Paul's question, oh, just a question for Janet. Or two questions, I guess. Number one, in terms of what you're asking us to do, this is, is or is not, would town-sponsored, it's more zoning, were to allow it?
Both. I mean...
So, the town would consider providing?
Exactly.
Okay. And I guess I just have a general question, maybe for Tim or Adam. Is, how do we, and this goes back to the water, I learned, we have different kinds of electrical systems throughout, access throughout. Is there a way that, in doing this work, we could find out where those exist?
So, we're like the two-phase, and we have those maps.
Okay.
Yes, I have access to those.
The, the Energy Commission has been working on identifying, like, potential spots for
solar and things like that. So, they, I believe you guys had it all mapped years or so ago?
Yeah, roughly.
So, we do have that, and that's good to look at. I think if, so would these be, you know, like, one or two chargers on the town office, and then one or two, like, that's kind of idea?
Yeah.
I don't think there would be any zoning issue, because they're governmental land uses anyways, so I think that, you know, we're protected in that regard. uses anyways, so I think that, you know, we're protected in that regard. From a large-scale, you know, like a Tesla charging center where there's three or four or five terminals, that's where we updated the zoning ordinance two years ago now, I think it was, to allow by special exception, so they would have to go to the zoning board of adjustment and present their case, and then come to you guys for a site plan. So say Hannah, a corner of the liquor store parking lot, wanted to lease to an electric vehicle charging station for six spots, that could go in the commercial zone. I think as long as we're thinking on government-owned land, there's no problem. If we got into applying for grants for private employers, I don't think, I mean, we've allowed them as sort of accessory in parking lot, when it's, when it's not a, like a full-scale charging center, you know, it's just a, you know, one or two on the building and.
Well, I think the thought was raised that if we put in a charging station, or say they did it at the shopping center, is it like a gas station? So, I mean, do we have to have a special zoning for that?
And we, that's what we did two years ago, so we're good there.
All right. And then the other question was, I mean, I think the town is interested in providing charging stations, sort of like our bicycle racks, because there are more and more people with cars, but it will also depend on how much it costs to do that sort of thing. But I think we'd be interested in looking into it if, if you all recommended sites that you thought were more appropriate, or the Energy Committee thought was more appropriate.
Question. Who owns the parking lot behind Pizza Chef? Is that a town parking lot?
Pizza, no.
Pizza Chef.
Pizza Chef does, okay.
I just want to convey some thoughts, as an owner of electric vehicle, have traveled all over the East Coast. As our opinion, my opinion, basically, that the successful charging stations are the ones that offer a person a chance to charge their car while they do something else. And so you're sitting in your car, waiting for a half hour, reading a newspaper, they can go off and have lunch, or dinner, or go to a store. Just so you know, Tesla has a penalty in their charging structure that, once you've reached your charge limit, it's a dollar a minute to sit there.
Really?
Yes. And they just send you a bill, it's part of your bill, a dollar a minute for overtime. So the idea is to move the vehicles in and out quickly and as efficiently, and not to have somebody sit there for six or seven hours taking up space. And only with the successful charging attractions, they're going to be the level-three high chargers, where you can get 100 and some kilowatt power instead of like six or seven what you get at your house. So it's for a whole different type of charging situation. Nobody in town that has an EV is going to go sit, put their car in a library charger, where they can have the same thing built in their house for $800. So we're looking for people who are traveling to and from, going through New London, that would stop here and spend some money, as well as charging their car for a half an hour. So the ideal candidates we found are high-volume gas stations, like the Sheetz gas station chain throughout the Northeast, malls, supermarkets, those are the ones where people can park their car for a half hour, do something else, then pick up their car and go home, or continue to travel.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah.
I'm probably going to be perceived as the illegitimate here, but they're going to pay for their charging, right? They're going to use a credit card and all that nonsense?
Yeah, like if, as in a Tesla, as an example, you have it in.
Let me explain.
What's that?
When you buy a Tesla, for example, you get your phone, your car is slave to your phone, slave to your wallet, all you punch, you just punch and charge in the car, and everything's automatic. There's no credit card to put in the machine, it's just your car, your account, that's it.
But to your, but yes, you're paying for it ultimately, it just charges your card automatically. That's a good question. It used to be, there was a time when the software and all that was such a pain and such a, to do, that it was almost better just to give it away for free, but that was the sort of slow charger, because it wasn't that much power, and it wasn't worth the administrative headache of having to deal with that, but, but now, for those fast charger ones, it's all just part of the system. That's a good question. Okay, well, lots to discuss on that, for sure, and a future date, but thank you, Janet, for that, that's good. And I'll pass that along to the Energy Committee, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anything else for public comment? What, that was it, you guys said no, right? I asked you, I think? Okay, great, thanks.
My only other thing is that the meeting a month from now is at the Professional Development Center. It is New Hampshire's primary day that day, so you guys will be in here voting. Is anybody tied up that evening with election responsibilities?
No, I'll just do it.
You'll do it earlier? Okay. So, all right.
Do you want to tell people to bring orders?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can, we can, we can adjourn, and then sign up for orders.
Perfect, perfect, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.